Let's call this meeting to order. All rise.
Oh, yes, oh, yes, this county commission meeting of Sumner County is now open pursuant to adjournment. God bless this country and this honorable commission. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Weatherford. Our pastor tonight is Pastor Chris Rouse from Faith Church, 639 South Water Avenue, Gallatin, Tennessee. He served 11 years as the worship pastor of College Heights Baptist Church in Gallatin and now serves as the lead pastor at Faith Church. He and his wife Angela have three children. He loves to read and watch movies, playing and watching all sports, and is a diehard Kentucky Wildcats fan. Which may or may not help you tonight, Pastor, but as he comes forward, I ask you to remember Commissioner Bill, or not Commissioner, Mr. Bill Kemp and his family. His mother-in-law passed away unexpectedly, and we want to remember Mr. Kemp in our prayers tonight. Pastor Rouse?
Thank you. Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we do thank you for this day, the beautiful weather, the sunshine that warms us today. We are so grateful to be called your own. And, Lord, we do want to remember the Kemp family tonight and their loss. Lord, every loss that we have in this life is just a reminder that there is something more to come. And so, Lord, thank you for those that you have redeemed and, Lord, that you have adopted into your family. Tonight, Lord, I pray your blessing on this assembly. Lord, it is true that there are no plans by men that will ever thwart your plan. Nothing that we do or say could ever go against your will. And so, Lord, I pray your will be done in this place tonight. Lord, I pray that there would be wisdom and there would be discernment in these great leaders. And, Lord, I do pray above all that you would be honored and glorified in this place, in this city, in this community, and in this great nation of ours. We give you the glory tonight, and we pray and ask all these things in your son's name, Jesus. Amen. God bless you.
Let's lead us to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's check our roll call.
Roll call is open, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
The 23 numbers are present.
Yes, Mr. Driver is out of town and unavailable tonight. All right, your regular consent agenda before you, let me just note a few things under report of the chair. Ms. Diane Black could not be here tonight, so we're going to bump that to a meeting when she's able to be here. So if you want to remove that from your agenda, everything else is the same. I'll wait on a motion. Motion made by Commissioner Foster, seconded by Commissioner Sullivan. All in fa-- oh, hang on, hang on one second. Got a first and a second on the motion. Commissioner Taylor.
Yeah, I'd like to pull 1904-13 off the consent agenda, which is item number eight for further clarification.
Which number did you say, Mr.? Number eight?
1904-13.
Okay, okay. We will make that number three under budget.
Yes, under legislative, we added the agenda item place resolution supporting legislation on robocalls.
Okay. We'll have to amend, Mr. Rain, can you hit your microphone first, please? Okay. We have to offer an amendment to the agenda.
Then I make that a motion, please.
Okay. Can you explain what you're adding?
This was something that was going, was missed when we had the legislative committee. It was not put on the agenda, and so it needs to be, would like to be added today. It's about resolution that would support legislation in the state legislature. And if we wait a month, they may be adjourned by the time we get to it. So we would need to do it tonight if we can.
And that legislation is on?
Robocalls.
Okay. Being opposed to robocalls?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second to add that to the agenda? Seconded by Commissioner Becker. I see no one else in the queue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously, so we will add that under legislative. We'll make that item three, the resolution urging the legislature to end robocalls. We will get you all a number on that resolution when we get there in legislative. All right. I see no one else in the queue. All in favor of our agenda, regular consent, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Your minutes are in your packet. I'll wait for a motion. Motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Seconded by Commissioner Echols. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Do we have anyone from the public that's signed up to speak tonight?
Anyone wish to sign up that has not already?
Thank you, Mr. Weatherford. All right. I'll remind everyone in public comments, you will have five minutes. We will give you a one-minute warning. You have five minutes to speak. We ask that in terms of the rules of decorum of our body, that you not disparage an elected official, a member of Sumner County, or an institution. Mr. Becker?
You must introduce certificates of recognition.
Yeah, yeah, let's do that. Thank you. We'll hold off on public comments just for a minute. We'll do our certificates of recognition first without objection. I'm going to yield the floor to Mr. Becker, who has a certificate of recognition.
This is the recognizing April 14 through April 20 as National Public Safety Communicators Week. So if there's anyone that wants to come up for this one? I can stand on either side or whatever. All right. So this is a resolution recognizing April 14 through April 20 as National Public Safety Communicators Week. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or medical services, and when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the production of life and preservation of property. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Sumner County Emergency Communications Center. And whereas Sumner County Emergency Communications Center serves our citizens daily in countless ways as we place our trust in the public safety communicators, not just this week, but every day of the year, and whose work is invaluable in emergency situations, and our health, safety, and well-being are often dependent upon the commitment and steadfast devotion of these dedicated men and women who are willing to make sacrifices, including working weekends, long shifts, and holidays. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners meeting in this regular session on this 15th day of April 2019, that this body does hereby recognize the week of April 14 through April 20, 2019, to be the National Public Telecommunicators Week in Sumner County in honor of the men and women whose diligence and dedication keep our citizens safe. And be it further resolved that this resolution shall be spread on the minutes of this body, and the clerk is to furnish a copy of this resolution to the public safety telecommunicators of the Sumner County Emergency Communications Center. And I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Becker. Seconded by Commissioner Krueger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Does anybody want to speak?
Speak, Paul.
You can keep it brief.
I'll keep it very brief. We certainly appreciate the recognition. All the credit goes to the members here and those back at the center working 24/7 to make this county the absolute safest it can. So we really appreciate the recognition, and they deserve all the credit, and thank you again. I shouldn't be in the middle, I'm sure.
All right. Commissioner Tucker will yield the floor to Commissioner Tucker.
This proclamation is for April as Fair Housing Month, so I'd like to ask my Realtor friends to come forward, please, and my fellow commissioners. I appreciate you all being here tonight. This is a resolution recognizing April as National Fair Housing Month. Whereas promoting that all persons are afforded a right to full and equal housing opportunities in the neighborhoods of their choice through education and awareness is a major goal of the Sumner Association of Realtors. Whereas the Fair Housing Act passed in April of 1968, immediately following Dr. Martin Luther King's assassination, and revised in 1974 and 1988, guarantees that all individuals, regardless of race, color, religion, sex, handicap, familial status, or national origin, will be given access to all housing-related opportunities, including rental and homeownership, and be allowed to make free choices regarding housing locations. And whereas the Sumner Association of Realtors is committed to uphold the Fair Housing Act and ensure quality opportunity for all citizens to rent, purchase, obtain financing, and enjoy all other housing-related services in the neighborhoods of their choice. Now therefore, it be resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners meeting in regular session on this 15th day of April 2019, that this body does recognize the month of April as National Fair Housing Month and commends the diligent and dedicated efforts of the Sumner Association of Realtors and all Realtors nationwide to raise awareness to end housing discrimination. And be it further resolved that this resolution shall be spread on the minutes of this body, and the clerk is to furnish a copy of this resolution to the Sumner Association of Realtors, and I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Tucker, seconded by Commissioner Sullivan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We'll go ahead. Ms. Ashley wanted to share some news. We'll let her speak at this time. You can come right here if you want to, Ms. Ashley.
I hope everyone's doing okay this evening. Just want to talk to you a little bit about voting, which might interest some of you on some level. We don't have a great place to vote in Hendersonville, and I've talked to the members of the Budget Committee about this. So we're trying to figure out, I came up with short-term, long-term. So we've got to figure out where we're going to vote in Hendersonville, where we're going to vote in Gallatin. We basically shut this building down somewhat, not intentionally, in November of last year, which is what we would call a midterm election. So we've got a couple of options. One we've discussed, and I don't think Kim is here, but I know Anthony is, is paving the parking lot behind the archives and continuing to vote here. So that's an option, if you all want to consider that. There's a church just around the corner that's for sale, and I was told that we don't have enough money, so that's okay to buy. For about 10,000 square feet, for around $800,000, or to consider voting at the Gallatin Civic Center, which we would have to get permission from the City of Gallatin for. So those are some options that I would like you all to consider. And this is for 2020. So again, short-term, long-term, I think we're going to have to build a building or do a different facility or something like that. Hendersonville has been horrible. We voted at the Episcopal Church, the library, City Hall, none of which are ideal locations. So I checked into one location, which was the old Walmart Sears Building. The rent there is about $42,000 a year. That's a lot of money, and we don't want to waste a lot of money on rent, but we can, and they want a minimum of three-year lease, so we can consider that in trying to figure out something different for Hendersonville. So, but I have talked to several Hendersonville aldermen and women who think we might be able to share some of that cost with the city. We can do that maybe for a couple of years, two or three, and figure out something a little bit more long-term there. St. Timothy's Church we voted at wasn't ideal because the location wasn't good. They had a lot of stairs. Lauren's over there shaking her head. It's tough. They're talking about putting a traffic signal in there, which would help. Or we, a lot of people asked me about First Baptist, and that would be a great location, but so far they have not been open to that. So I talked to a couple aldermen today who said that might be a possibility. If the light is there, that would help us a lot. And then our last, which I think is the best long-term option is, Anthony, what's it called? Comer Farm?
Barn.
Barn, down there next to the Historical Society that's going to take a few million dollars, two or three, to remodel. And ultimately, that would be a great spot between Hendersonville and Gallatin. So I just want to put this out there to you guys to see what you would like to do and what the Budget Committee would like to do, and what you guys want to fund in terms of coming up with a bigger solution for where we are today. And I'm absolutely open to any questions. Yes, ma'am?
Is there anything on the other side of Hendersonville, because I'm thinking about when you were talking, the locations you've mentioned.
Ms. Krueger, could you hit your microphone, please?
She has been turned off. Okay.
The locations that sound like you've mentioned are on the opposite side of Hendersonville.
When you say opposite, opposite to what?
Opposite to Gillispie, on the Gallatin side.
To Gallatin. I'm wondering if you've considered, I wonder if you've considered anything closer to the Gillispie side or even more centrally located in Hendersonville?
Well, we've called most of, all of the churches, most of them now have daycares for their children, so we've called--
Good Pastor, not Good Pastor, I'm sorry, Good Shepherd. Used to be Good Shepherd Methodist was one.
I would suggest that we take this to General Ops and try to come up with a long-term solution. I really don't think, we don't have any legislation on the floor tonight, and anything we did from the floor would require a budgetary option. So it seems to me that the most appropriate option for discussing long-term, short-term options for voting would be the, so if we're going to talk about financing and locations and things, I think there's just, I think our committee system would lend itself better to do that than looking at options from the floor tonight. Does anyone have a specific question for Ms. Ashley just regarding voting in general? Okay. Commissioner Taylor?
I'm glad you're here tonight, even though it wasn't on the agenda, but--
I'm on the agenda.
Oh, it is?
I am.
I missed it, I'm sorry, I apologize.
All right, well, I'm going to throw a piece of paper.
That's all right, but you'll appreciate this. Thank you for what you do. And also, when you bring this to whatever committee you bring it to, I would like to strongly suggest that you look at our area of the county, because we have such a huge landmass with two precincts. First, second, and third covers well over half of the county, and those understand population. But you also have to look at the voters and the distance that they have to travel. With only two precincts, I mean, I have people that's told me since we closed North Sumner Elementary School, they quit voting. So with that being said, I would truly appreciate you considering that, opening up some of our precincts that are, we're out in the largest landmasses of the county.
Well, we're certainly not talking about your area in particular, but we, you know, we're like a traveling caravan. We will come around to all the areas, and we're not even suggesting that we do away with that at any level.
No, I'm not saying, I don't want you to do away with anything.
The satellite voting.
Add to what we tuck away from.
Okay, well, you guys pay for all of this, so if you want us to fund it, we certainly will be there.
I would definitely vote for funding if you put another voting precinct in my area.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Mr. Graves?
Yes, mine's kind of with moles there in First, Second, Third District in Bethpage, it ain't funny, but in Bethpage, we had a long term. When I was a kid, we voted at the Bethpage School. Moved around, side view, moved to the Methodist Church area, which is available now for that to have another, add that precinct back in there. And I know between First and Third District, especially in our area, we're only got two in our, Third and two in the First, I don't know how many is in the Second, but I would appreciate to look for that. And I appreciate what you do too also. But it's really hurt our voting in our area, and I would appreciate you looking at it. And I know, and I was, another commissioner mentioned to me about the Comer Barn, there's some discussion about renovating it. If we renovated that barn, it could be used for that, and it might even cover Springfield, Hendersonville, and Gallatin in that area, because that's a good location, wouldn't be, so I would be in favor of doing that if it all gets put together for that. But I would really think, appreciate if you'd look hard for the three districts about doing that, because we go from a Trousco Canyon line in Bethpage to their 31E, all the way to Gallatin, there's no voting precinct. We have to travel. Of course, some, right now, I'm down here, there's no problem with me voting, but it's a lot of people won't drive that far. Now, I'll be glad to cook, if get back one in Bethpage, I'll be glad to cook hamburgers and hot dogs and furnish that. Thank you.
Just no ribs and trailer, right? No, I'm just kidding. Whatever you guys want us to do, I mean, whatever you guys are willing to fund, I'm fine with doing, and we can get the people to do that. So again, short-term, long-term, we're trying to figure out what we need to do for next year. You know, we had a phenomenal year this last year, participation, that what they called midterm elections, we basically had presidential turnout for last year. So these plans have to be made now. This has to be funded now. What you guys want has to be decided now, and that's where we are.
Hang on, hang on, we've got a queue. Mr. Hyde, just hit your button.
Laura, just one quick question. My mother-in-law, because she's 91, votes by mail.
Yes, sir.
So is it impossible to open up early voting by mail? Would the state prevent that? If not, could legislation be introduced to change that? Because you verify that vote, and that would save millions of dollars on facilities to--
She can already do that, so by law, we have to go--
I know, I know she can because of her age, but could we open up early voting in general by mail?
You absolutely can by, but that would take legislation by your, you know, for the entire state of Tennessee, and that's actually been discussed the last four years. It's very--
I would just suggest looking at that as a possibility of approaching them to change the law once again, because that would save millions of dollars.
Well, that's not my decision.
I know it's not yours, but you can promote that idea.
But what I'm saying is, you guys would have to fund that again, because we're going to have to mail all of that out, mail all that paperwork, get that back, and I'm not--
A lot cheaper than $42,000 a year.
I'm not opposed to it, I want you to understand that at all, but you guys would have to fund that.
Commissioner Ray? Yeah, just to clarify, people need to understand, we've got three elections next year.
That is correct.
The first one being in March--
That we know about.
So far, March, August, and November. So we've got, for when she's talking short-term, she's actually talking about March.
Now.
Yeah.
Right. Now, but you know, we've got all these legal notices we have to, and we have to plan, and we've got to have all these things in place, basically now. We've already sent the notification letters to the primary, to the state parties to say, do you want to hold a primary? That's now, so we're here.
All right.
Well, March is the present, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Ms. McCrea, could you hit your microphone? I'm sorry. Ms. Beck, could you hit your microphone?
Well, March is the presidential preference primary, and if we hold that with, you know, with, with the presidential, then we get reimbursed from the state. So that saves the county about $80,000 to $100,000 if we move it from May to March. Did I answer your question that you didn't ask? Okay.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Ashley. Oh, wait, hang on, hang on one second. We've got one more. Mr. Goode.
Mr. Chairman, under the circumstances of what Ms. Ashley's saying, if it's okay with you, would, can we refer it back to the budget hearings on Thursday if it's okay with Chairman Taylor, since it could or could not be imperative?
That's all. We don't really have a motion on the floor, so I think it's perfectly fine to go through our regular, our regular budget process with hearings on Thursday.
Yeah.
That seems to make the most sense to me. And then, if, at that time, if budget deems it necessary to go to General Ops, we can do that as well.
And aside note, Mr. Chairman, nothing to do with Ms. Ashley, but if it's okay with the body without objection, can we do another resolution that Commissioner Graves gets the best Easter outfit?
Yes, out of order. Thank you, Ms. Ashley. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right. We're going to jump to public recognition. Ms. Cohen and Mr. Miller, we had two sign-up sheets tonight. Y'all actually signed on the one that said land disturbance fee. I'm assuming that you're wanting to speak to an item on the agenda and not, we have a public hearing on a, on a land disturbance fee, but you wanted to speak on the main agenda. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just going to swap the two. I just want to make sure that, if you wanted to speak on both, you're perfectly welcome to. It was just a little bit different procedure. So just with a reminder, we'll do five minutes. I'll give you a one-minute warning. Again, just for the rules of our decorum, we ask that comments not be disparaging towards Sumner County or its citizens or elected officials. And you'll have five minutes. If you won't come up, Ms. Cohen, you are first. And if you want to share your name and address, then I'll start your five minutes after, after you state your name and address. Yes, ma'am, right here. I'm sorry.
My name is Sandra Cohen. I live at 304 University Drive in Gallatin. Each of you on this board is supposed to be working for the well-being and quality of life for the people of Sumner County. Your sole responsibility is to the people of Sumner County who live, those who live here, because they enjoy all that the county has to offer. Its beauty, its open space to breathe, it's not being made up of crowded cities that will eventually merge into one big bedroom community for Nashville. So recently, it has been almost beyond comprehension for me to sit in meetings and watch boards and committees even be asked to okay appropriation of money for land purchases without any surveying to see how much land we are really paying for, and for, and with no appraisals that tell us whether or not we're paying too much per acre. And then, once that was questioned, the purchase money was still allocated and is on the agenda tonight for approval prior to the survey and appraisal, before we even know what the land is worth. I would bet that each of you would require such information before authorizing your own money for a home or business location. Sorry. We have zoning laws and approved countywide strategic plan for a reason, but for the past meetings that I've watched and listened to, it's as if none of that matters. I truly don't know any of you, so I'm not calling out any individuals or placing blame. But when you have neighbor after neighbor plead with you not to allow their quality of life be eroded by bordering development, their concerns seem to be ignored. Very soon, oh, I'm sorry, when people build and buy homes in areas that have specific zoning, they do it in good faith that such zoning will be, will remain intact. They are, they are your property taxpayers. And on tonight's agenda, you will be discussing the property tax structure. I'm hoping that there is, and I believe this is maybe what you've been talking about just a second ago, that there is room in that discussion to consider requiring impact fees from the developers and builders of the homes that will add to the taxes of the residents of your cities. Because of the need for more large, more and larger schools and education personnel, a certain increase, or a certain, very certain increase in police and fire personnel, vehicles for those workers, and other things that will be needed as the populace grows at such a heavy and ridiculous pace. I'm not ignorant. I understand and even appro, appro, sorry, appreciate change and growth. But when it happens against the desires and wishes of the residents who are being affected by it, it's unconscionable. As it stands, relative to the land purchase on which you will be voting tonight, we don't even know how much of the land surrounding the tracks is conceivably part of a railway easement, and as such, could be unusable. So in actuality, we have no idea how much is truly available for a purchase and for, and future use. But almost a half a million dollars in funds are already on the agenda for expenditure before knowing how much money will really be needed. And this is after appropriation of almost a million dollars in a land swap, considering more, that didn't consider more than one piece of land. I'm sorry to have to say it from, but from the outside looking in, this is a huge rush to purchase, and it just begins to look like something's rotten, and it's not in Denmark.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Mr. John Miller? Yeah, Mr. Miller, if you state your name and address for the record, please.
Okay. I'm John Miller, 104 Pine Drive, Gallatin. And I'm going to speak to Mr. Isbell's presentation he's going to make in a few minutes about the two-year reappraisals. And I think personally, there's parts of it that I really like, and that's evening out tax increases. There's parts of it that I'm really kind of very, very, very concerned with. This body has typically used the reappraisal process to raise taxes. And giving, going from five years to two years just allows that, that tax increase to keep coming and coming and coming and coming. And for it to work, my feeling is that you've got to have a county with the highest integrity and honesty. And I'm sad to say, I've been here for 14 years, I have, I'm sad to say that this county does not have that. The perception from the, from the people and voters is not very high as, as to the integrity and the honesty of this group of people.
Mr. Miller, we ask that you not impugn the integrity of citizens of Sumner County or its institutions.
Yeah, okay.
As part of our rules of decorum.
That's fine. Alls I'll say then is that people's perception is reality. And up until that perception changes, the reality doesn't change. And a long time ago, when I was up and coming businessperson, I had a mentor that told me that people do what you inspect and not what you expect. And we expected a lot, and we didn't get it. And I think that now you're going to start seeing the people inspect or change. And I would just hope that you'd consider some of this when you think about the two-year cycle and how it's going to play out to the people that vote and the people that pay their taxes. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Public notice, there will be a public hearing at the Sumner County Commissioners' meeting on Monday, April 15th, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. This meeting shall be held at the Sumner County Administration Building in the Commission Chambers, located at 355 North Belvedere Drive, Gallatin, Tennessee. This meeting will be to discuss and potentially vote on a change of fees for land disturbance permits. This change would require land disturbance permit fees to be paid for all non-agricultural development activities in the county, regardless of the acreage of the parcel, and would remove the exemption currently applied for parcels over five acres. This meeting follows prior discussion and vote by the Planning Commission during the February 26th, 29th meeting. A copy of this notice is on file to Sumner County Planning and Stormwater Department at Sumner County Administration Building, Gallatin, Tennessee.
We'll call the public hearing to order. We have no one signed up to speak on the item on the agenda. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on the agenda item? Public session is closed. Is there a motion to approve the land disturbance permit fee paid, 1904-01? Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Krueger. I see no one in the queue. Let's, let's vote.
The vote is open, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
There's 22 affirmative votes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right. You have your approval of consent agenda items, 1904-Consent. Is there a motion to approve our consent agenda?
No.
Motion made by Commissioner Ring, seconded by Commissioner Shale. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Your written reports are on your desk. Let's look at our notaries. Is there a motion to approve our notaries? Motion made by Commissioner Mo Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Graves. Let's vote.
Motion is on the board, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
23 affirmative votes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Goode for Committee on Committees.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committee on Committees met tonight in its regularly scheduled meeting. There was one item on the agenda, the Board of Vaccilization Alternative added a two-year term to Radford Garrett. It was recommended by the county executive. It was approved. It's a recommendation by Gallatin. It was unanimous. I so moved.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Goode, seconded by Commissioner Becker. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry.
You go to Education.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and no, no report on Education since I'm standing.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Goode. Highway, Mr. Graves?
Mr. Chairman, we may, I don't have nothing specific to, but I, we brought up in highway committee, Rob Suppen, and he talked about putting tiles in for people at their property. You furnish a tile, and, and the county highway department has been putting those tiles in according to the standards and policy and the specs of this county. Also, it's, it's costing about $1,400 per site out on average. So that's quite a bit of money. We've kind of talked about it in committee, hadn't made any action, done any action yet. I think there'll be some kind of, somewhere down the road to, to take care of this property, problem, issue, I shouldn't say a problem. I just want to, citizens to know that's coming up sometime too also. That's the only reason I said anything about it, because it's another expense to add it to the homeowner also. Now, it may be a clause in there where you'd be able to do it yourself also. So that would save you that money, whatever your developer or your construction guy done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. We'll go to General Ops. Michelle.
Just a quick announcement.
I'm sorry.
You good? Okay. One quick announcement. We are going to form an, I'm going to form an ad hoc committee with three county commissioners and three City of Gallatin councilmen. I know there was a lot of discussion about the parking with the courthouse, if the commission should move forward with that. So in order to be proactive, we are going to create a joint ad hoc. And Ms. Dinnon will let you guys know whenever we get that scheduled. We're working with them as well. So it's a little bit difficult trying to get our nights together. But that committee will be from the City of Gallatin, Mr. Sean Finell, Mr. Craig Hayes, Mr. Jimmy Overton from the County Commission, Mr. Paul Goode, Mr. Larry Hinton, and myself. So we'll get that out as soon as we get it scheduled. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle. Commissioner Ring.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Did you want to do emergency services first?
Yeah, let me do emergency services first, then I'll come back to you.
No report.
Hit your button again, Mr. Ring.
You were good.
Just want to make sure we're, we don't skip anybody.
There you go, Mr. Ring. You're up.
Yeah. Resolution 1904-02, authorizing a continuous two-year reappraisal cycle, and I will make that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Ring, seconded by Commissioner Goode.
And I believe Mr. Isbell has a presentation for us.
Yeah. Mr. Isbell, do you want to present?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Taylor, are you okay if we wait and let Mr. Isbell go, since you're in the queue? Without objection, we'll go to Mr. Isbell.
All right. I was asked to, to give this presentation that, that I originally presented to the Legislative Committee. I know this body has received the slides of this, but, but I want to go through it briefly and, and kind of bring everybody up to date on it. All right. Legal framework for establishing a reappraisal plan is clearly spelled out in TCA 67-5-1601. And it, the default is a six-year reappraisal. So a six-year reappraisal does not require county commission approval. An alternative plan, whether we do two, four, or five, that requires my approval and the board's approval. So let's look at what we're doing in Tennessee right now. Right now, we have 13 counties that are doing a four-year reappraisal. 60 counties are doing a five-year, and 22 counties are doing a six-year. And if we expand that nationwide, we've got 21 states that have a reappraisal plan that's one to two years. 13 states do it every three to four years. 12 states, five to 10 years. And then four states have no statutory requirements for So let's talk a little bit about each plan, so everybody understands what we're dealing with. Six-year plan, the pros on that is the onsite review is easier. We spread it out over five years. Bad side of that is, we spread it out over five years. The next one, more stability in the tax base, because typically, this body votes increases on reappraisal year. So your tax base is going to stay current, barring any appeals. The percentage change is greater in between reappraisal cycles. For this plan, we need no more personnel, which means it will not be an impact to our fiscal budget for 2019 to 2020. Now, one of the significant issues with this one is we have a current value update that is done in the third year of that reappraisal. Now, for those that don't understand what a current value update is, that's basically where we do a sales ratio study. That sales ratio exceeds 10%, then all properties are going to be factored, factored up by that percentage. Okay? At that point, we set a new certified tax rate, and we apply that tax rate to your decision-making processes from there. Now, it's important on a current value update that you understand we do a blanket increase. It's a state mandate, so there's no looking at equity across properties. It's just a flat, if it went up 12%, every property's 12%, regardless of the equity of that. Again, that does not require county commission approval. Obviously, the longer you go, the, the longer-term equity is a problem. It's tough for strategic planning, again, because you have a longer term between appraisals. Citizen perception's typically negative on this type of plan. And the reason being is that current value update. You add two more sales ratios in there as well, which significantly impacts your. You add two more sales ratios in there as well, which significantly impacts your tangible personal property for businesses as well as the public utilities. And for the most part, the state's moving away from six-year reappraisals. They're moving towards five-year for most of the counties. So you're going to see that breakdown change over the years. Let's talk about a five-year cycle. Five-year cycle is what I originally submitted, and of the three, it is the best option. The four, five, and six is the best option because we do not need additional personnel to carry out this plan. There is no current value update associated with this plan, and it is the most common cycle chosen by assessors across Tennessee. And then we have no impact to our 1920 budget subject to this plan. What are some of the cons? Again, just like a six-year, it's not as tight as doing it every year or every other year. You have the sales ratio studies that you have to deal with in the second and fourth year. And citizens' perception can get negative when you have these big growth spikes that we see going across Middle Tennessee. Now, let's look at a four-year plan. Four-year plan, value change percentage is less, obviously because you're only capturing four years, and there's no current value update. You still have sales ratio studies for tangible personal property and public utilities. It is the least popular option among assessors in Tennessee, and it will have a significant impact to the 1920 budget. If we agreed on a four-year plan, that agreement would have to include two vehicles and two field representatives, one covering residential and one covering commercial. So I'm not in favor of a four-year plan. So, let's talk about funding. TCA 67-5-1601, before we enter any such contract for reappraisal, we have to make sure that it's properly funded. And we have this municipal cost-sharing program. And you look at last year, we brought in about $477,000. So that can provide funding if we agreed on a four-year plan. Again, I don't think it's necessary. I don't think it's necessary to spend taxpayer dollars when we don't have to. Now, I originally opted for a two-year plan because it is a good viable option, and it would meet the onsite requirements under current law. And one key point to it is it could not limit the citizen's voice in the reappraisal process, which it will not, and we have to be adequately funded to administer the plan. And I felt that it was a unique opportunity for the county commission and the assessor properties office to come together on a policymaking plan. You saw where, I showed you earlier in the state, if you looked across states, that most states, not all states, but a lot, is doing a one- to two-year reappraisal. And the reason for that is, is that the percentage change is much less. Public acceptance is typically better on a two-year because you don't see those spikes. We don't have a sales ratio, and the review cycle is uncoupled from the evaluation cycle. Levels increase-decrease, so you get better opportunities for financial and strategic planning. And standing on its own as a valuation model is the most equitable option for the citizens. What are some cons? Every other year, we have to increase the postage cost. Not all properties will be reviewed because we'll decouple that review process. However, working permits we typically capture all grow. And then the perception of additional opportunities to increase the tax rate is real, and that's the biggest problem with this two-year plan. Don't need any more personnel. Again, it's a unique opportunity to come together, and within our office right now, we have the technology to implement that plan. Property valuation in Tennessee, as in most states, is ad valorem based on market values with assessment classifications defined by use. Property values are not static in that they are in flux depending on market conditions, inventory, and general economic conditions. Moreover, the value changes are not uniform across the county. In Sumter County, we've seen property values appreciate rapidly while others grow at a slower rate. It is this type of environment that we should have a two-year reappraisal cycle. It necessitates regular reassessments to maintain that equity property valuation for all Sumter County citizens. Infrequent reappraisals can result in significant overpayment of property taxes, as we saw during the six-year reappraisal cycle of 2009, where the numbers were released only to find the values plummeting the very next year. Then, as we approached the 2014 reappraisal, where it was a five-year cycle, we saw the values climbing, but they just didn't climb fast enough to reach that 2009 reappraisal. The combination of infrequent reappraisals with tax increase shifts, it basically shifts the tax burden away from properties that are appreciating rapidly to the properties that are stagnant in growth or decreasing in value. This is a vertical equity issue that is best solved with frequent reappraisal cycles. Conversely, an incremental approach can be detrimental to citizens if a tax-and-spend mentality exists. Chairman, members of the commission, Tennessee Code Annotate demands, it mandates that we come together with a reappraisal plan for the citizens of Sumter County. While in the past, the county commission has typically left the decision to the professionals of the field, now it seems to be politics of policy implementation.
Mr. Isbell, I'd ask that you not give the, there's no reason for that.
As an expert in the field of administration, I presented different options grounded in fact. While I would continue on a five-year plan as originally submitted, I cannot consider a four- or six-year plan. While a two-year plan is new to Tennessee, there exists acceptability across the nation. The reassessment standards developed by the International Association tells us that the quality of valuation estimates deteriorates over time. Now, on a final note, after reviewing all of the facts, all of the pros and the cons, I cannot in good conscience pursue a two-year plan based on the current mentality of this board and the debt policies that are in place. So it would not be in my best interest to continue promoting that. I think that we should remain with a five-year reappraisal plan, and that's where I stand as the assessor of property. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Isbell. Our motion on the floor is a two-year continuing reappraisal cycle. It's been made and seconded. We have a number of people in the queue, so we will go to Ms. Krueger. She's first in the queue. Oh, I'm sorry, you know what? I tell you what, we'll come back to you because I already queued her up, if that's okay, Mr. Taylor.
Actually, go ahead and go.
We lost you in the transition to the.
Go ahead and go to him because I need to process a little bit first.
Okay, all right. We're going to go to Commissioner Taylor, and then we'll come back to Ms. Krueger. You're up, Commissioner Taylor.
I was more than willing to.
I appreciate it.
I need to think for a second.
Okay. I thought a lot about this, so I've been to two different meetings about it, committee meetings, not commission meetings, well, two commission meetings as well. So I attended the March Legislative Committee meeting where the five-year plan was presented and unanimously approved. We came to our meeting that month, and it was pulled from the agenda. I tried to receive clarification why it was pulled, reached out to you and the law director, and there's questions. So, you know, there's no better place for me, I would think, to get those questions answered than right here.
Sure.
Because every legislator that has a vote is sitting right here.
Sure. I'd be happy to. On the night in March, it was on the agenda after coming through legislative. We had a combination of two things. We had a full docket. We had the land proposal for First Baptist. We had several other things. You know, part of my job as chair is to make sure that we have adequate time as legislators or as commissioners to make good decisions. I knew we were going to have a late night. I had several commissioners come to me and ask for it to be reconsidered, so I made the decision to refer it back to legislative to be considered. You know, we pulled it off the agenda. Every commissioner here had the opportunity to put it back on the agenda to discuss it. It seemed to me, in my judgment, that the best thing was for it to go back to legislative to be considered and come back to us as it has this month.
Thank you. Also, in attending the meetings and listening to constituents throughout the process and engaging constituents in their concerns, because that's, you know, who put me in this seat here, is constituents. So, we mumbled over different things, and I would like to read a quote from one of those citizens. And, you know, perception is a lot, and when I say "we," I'm speaking about myself as well. You know, there's a perception out there that some people don't trust us. I mean, I'm in the group. I mean, I got a chair in the arena, so. One of the quotes that, you know, kind of hit me was, a constituent said, "If our property values and market was in a downward turn, the two-year reappraisal or reevaluation would not even be considered." And I strongly believe in what that constituent said and that quote. So, with all the concerns and everything that I've encountered through this two-month process, I move to amend the resolution to a five-year reappraisal cycle.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Mo Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Jeremy Mansfield to move the appraisal cycle to a five-year cycle from a two-year. We have five people in the queue. I'm going to ask you each if you want to speak to the amendment or if you want to stay on the main motion. I'll go through the list in order. Ms. Echols, are you on the amendment or the main motion?
I'd like to speak on the amendment.
Okay. You're up.
Okay. Well, I hit my microphone to speak on something different, and I don't talk much, so. Y'all ready? In order to more fully understand this issue, I called our C Task Property Assessment Consultant, Joe Griffin, and spoke to him, and we spoke at length, and mostly about the two-year continuous reappraisal cycle, but since that's off the table, I'll just kind of leave that. So that makes this easier. Basically, his input was that with the size county that we have and the growth rate that we have been experiencing, it probably does make sense to shorten our cycle and go to a four-year cycle. He didn't feel like it was something that should be considered mandatory. It's traditional and acceptable to do a five-year cycle. A six-year definitely would not be a good option for us, in his opinion. To me, I'm not sold either way. The two-year, he did not think was a great idea, so I'm glad that it's off the table. I would not have supported that. But the four-year, it's really just, is it a big enough benefit to our citizens to appropriate the additional funds towards the property assessor's office? Because that'll be a year-over-year increase that's going to be required, not just for this budget year, obviously, if we went from a five to a four. So that's, you know, basically what we'd have to decide is, is that worth it or not?
Yeah. And, Ms. Echols, just let me point out that the two-year cycle is still on. We're just on the amendment to move to a five-year.
Okay, then I support that amendment, I guess.
Okay, okay, all right.
There, I spoke to the amendment.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Echols. Mr. Tinsley, are you on the amendment or the main motion?
I'm not exactly sure.
Okay.
Because I have lots of questions that I feel like are going to cover, but.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what, hit the amendment, and then we'll come back to you if you have on the, if we get back to the general.
Okay. Am I allowed to ask Mr. Isbell questions?
We can suspend the rules if you want to. Yeah, that's fine.
I'd appreciate that. Mr. Isbell, I'm.
Hang on one second, Mr. Tinsley. Let me get him queued up and then, okay. Without objection, we'll suspend the rules to allow Mr. Isbell to answer questions. Okay? Thank you.
I'm slightly confused because Friday afternoon, I sat in your office, and you told me that you supported a two-year plan and that you thought that was the best thing for our county. And I also distinctly remember being in a committee meeting one day last week where you told us that you supported the two-year plan, that it would be the best for our county. And now you are up here kind of baiting, switching us, telling us that, whoa, whoa, I don't like that idea anymore. I want to get, I want to leave it the way it is. I'm really, really confused slash concerned on why on Friday afternoon around 2:00, you were telling me that this was the best idea for our county, and tonight at whatever time it is, after 8:00, you're telling me that it's no longer a good idea for our county.
Commissioner Tinsley, did you listen to my presentation?
I did.
Okay. In my presentation, I clearly stated, from a valuation perspective, this is the best option for the citizens. However.
But you didn't know that.
However, with a commission that operates under this current standard of expanding debt policy and wanting to expand that through tax increases, I cannot support that proposal.
But you supported it on Friday.
Absolutely.
So you supported it on Friday, and in the 72 hours that incurred, you have decided that that's a bad idea?
I've gotten a lot of feedback. And have basically raised my concerns and solidified my original concerns that with this type of debt policy that this board has, that a two-year will be basically an incremental tax increase.
Interesting.
Pretty straightforward.
Interesting. Okay. The rest of the minor for the other, yeah, not the amendment.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tinsley. We're going to go to Commissioner Ring.
Yes, sir. I was originally going to speak on the original resolution, now I'll speak on this. Mr. Isbell, this is the same commission we have today as we had on Friday. Nothing's changed. I feel like.
Hang on, let me ask one question. Hang on one second. Are you wanting to ask questions, Mr. Isbell? Are you just making a comment?
I was just making a comment, and because Mr. Tinsley actually asked my question, so.
All right, let me, thank you, Mr. Isbell. Let me just say, remind everybody to direct your comments to the chair.
Thank you. Yes, sir. This, again, this is the same commission we had Friday. I don't see that anything's changed. I oppose this amendment because I, as Mr. Isbell said last Tuesday, last Monday at our meeting, that this, the two-year reappraisal would be the best, the best thing for us. So I believe I agree with that, and so I oppose this amendment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ring. Mr. Mansfield, are you on the amendment?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Originally planned a little bit on the motion, but it really explains why I'm for this amendment for the five-year cycle. You know, we heard from citizens tonight speak and concern, and I've had a chance to ask a lot of citizens, you know, what's the best, they feel is the best, a two, four, five, or six-year policy. And, you know, perception is somewhat of a reality in communities, so, and I think there is a perception of the public, a negative one of our legislative body, as the senior commissioner from District One said, that, you know, I'm included in that. And so I want to be very cautious in what I say, but, you know, my feedback has been citizens are unwilling to embrace a two-year cycle because of, they don't trust us with their tax dollars. They really feel that it's an opportunity to do a tax increase every two years versus every five years, or four years, or six years. And they are not willing to do that. I cannot deny what they are saying. I have the same concerns about our legislative body personally, and that's my personal opinion, as also a tax-paying citizen in this county. So, I do support the five-year plan because I just feel the two-year plan would give us more cover to slowly and incrementally raise taxes. You know, a question was asked of me by a citizen, said, well, what's better for the citizens, to have smaller increases incrementally or to have one larger increase? And my answer was neither. Because if we truly are in rock-solid financial shape as a county, we should not need a tax increase. increase, either in our bill or in the certified tax rate. If the rapid growth that our county is experiencing truly is so great, then the areas impacted by growth should have plenty of money available to adequately fund the services that are needed for that growth in an ideal environment. But I don't currently see that happening, and I have citizens don't see that happening. I've heard a lot of comments from citizens about that and I can appreciate our property assessors' concern and taking into consideration the citizens' voice. I appreciate his openness and transparency during this process and gathering feedback from the citizens, because ultimately that's our job, is to gather feedback from citizens and to weigh and deliberate that feedback and give the citizens a fair shake. Regardless of whether I like the decision or not, I want to know what the citizens want, even if they want me to vote in a certain way that I might not have a personal interest in doing so, unless it... I'm not going to compromise more morals anyway, but I know you guys wouldn't either. But we're called to represent the citizens. I do understand the benefits of a two-year plan. I've spoken with Mr. Isbell. I came to the meeting last week. I sat through the presentation. This is the second time I've sat through it. I had a town hall meeting with our property assessor, with citizens, to go over this process and how things were working. And the citizens really feel that our county has a spending problem and that therefore they would not want to give us keys to a reappraisal process that historically we could take advantage of and raise taxes every two years, be it incrementally or largely. Comments that I got from citizens is that they're not concerned about spikes that are up or down. Because the tax rate shouldn't move opposite of the appraised value, to be revenue-neutral. And I know, I use the term revenue-neutral loosely because I know there's a target. There are some people that are going to fall up or down out of that target and it's a generalized target, so I understand there are variances there. So I'm speaking generally in that aspect. But unless we, as tax-assessing officials, decide to certify the rates that are given to us without increasing them or even decreasing them, by all current indicators that I've seen as a county commissioner, such as our spending patterns, our debt capacity, future plans, I have concerns that the rate will be raised above a revenue-neutral rate. I do have a concern and so do citizens. And so therefore, I agree with citizens on that of having a five-year plan versus a two-year plan. Citizens had a lot of comments, but there were moms and dads that I saw that they did not see it as a benefit to have a two-year appraisal cycle. They saw it more of a benefit for five years because, again, they were afraid of incremental increases. My opinion is, and I'll conclude with this, it's kind of like a frog in a slowly boiling pot of water, is what the two-year process is, what the citizens feel like it's like. You can incrementally keep increasing things over a two-year period, over a two-year period, over a two-year period, and a citizen might look up and realize, hey, my taxes have gone, my tax bill has gone up hundreds, if not thousands, of dollars. And by then, it's too late. Their wallet's cooked. Their budget's cooked. And so even though, I understand what the assessor's saying about the spikes on the two-year process, but I understand also what the citizens have concerns about, even as concerns are addressed here tonight. So I cannot support a two-year plan at this time and I am fully in support of a five-year plan and would encourage you guys to seriously consider it. And because I just think it's the best thing for our county at this time and I'd appreciate your vote on this amendment.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mansfield. Ms. Kruger.
Sorry, I'm trying to pull up the notes from my email. Okay, so I guess my question, again, is going to be for Mr. Isbell and it can be on the amendment, on the main motion, it's just a general question on either way. Is it okay to ask for him to come up and answer the question I have?
Without objection, we'll suspend the rules for Mr. Isbell to answer a question.
There it is.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Isbell.
One of the comments, I think I understood you to say is that the least favorite, least popular option is the four-year appraisal in Tennessee. Is that correct?
Yes. The fewest counties have the four-year reappraisal plan.
The fewest counties short of a two-year appraisal plan because no one...
No one has a two-year plan in Tennessee.
Okay. I guess I just wanted to make sure I was understanding that correctly because I was sitting here doing the math on the counties you have listed and didn't see any room for a two-year to be anywhere else. So technically, the least popular is the two-year at this point because no one's done it yet. I guess I feel like this whole two-year thing is a little bit of a political move. On whose part, I don't know and I don't really care. Really doesn't matter to me. But it doesn't necessarily seem like to me it's in the best interest of the citizens for us to jump into something that no one else has tried, no one else has done, over a four-year, five-year, or even a six-year. Six-year seems more considerable, even though it doesn't look good. I wouldn't approve of it, but it seems more considerable than something that no one has done, that seems to be thrown out here as a political move by whoever at this point. And yes, this is the same commission that was sworn in and serving on Friday. So that's all I have to say about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kruger. We're going to go next to Michelle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to, I sat in legislative just a week ago...
Thank you, Mr. Isbell. I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you. And in legislative, brought this up, that this was a very difficult and complicated process that we're talking about. And I asked Mr. Isbell at that point if he would consider possibly talking to Mr. Holt, doing a special call, meeting to meet with commissioners, because it would be very difficult to vote on the floor for something that some commissioners were hearing a presentation for, for the first time. Add on top of that, in the past 72 hours, that Mr. Isbell has completely changed his support of which plan he's going to support. Now we have even more confusion on the floor. I don't feel that it's in the best interest of any of our citizens to make a decision based upon this confusion that's here tonight. So I'm going to make a motion that we refer this back to legislative again, because, again, in the legislative meeting, Mr. Isbell did state that although it would be preferable to have a decision in April, May would be okay. So under that statement that he made, I'm going to make a motion that we refer this back to legislative again and allow everybody to do a little bit more research and figure out what would be the best plan for our citizens. Because I do feel like there is some politics involved with this, whether it's a two-year, a four-year, a five, or a six, and we have to have time to figure out and get to the bottom of this and which is going to serve our citizens in the best. So that is my motion.
Hang on. We've got a motion...
In 10 seconds.
And 15 seconds, I think. I'm going to give the second to Mr. Goode. Motion made by Michelle, seconded by Ms. Goode. Commissioner Taylor. Wait, do we...
Mr. Baker.
Let me check. You can always refer. You can always refer. Okay. All in favor of referring to legislative, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. I've got, I have 21 in favor. I have by voice vote that I recognize, so correct me if I'm wrong. I had Mr. Mansfield and Mr. Mo Taylor voting no. Did anyone else wish to vote no? Okay. So by a vote of 21 to 2, we'll refer to legislative in May. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next on the agenda, we have Resolution 1904-03, a resolution supporting broadband legislation in Southern...
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Ring, seconded made by the person most affected by the lack of broadband in Sumner County, Michelle.
This still doesn't affect my house, just to be clear.
And I defer to Michelle.
All right. I can speak for Michelle, says she's in favor of broadband. And as I said in legislative, I think this is one of the most important things that I hope our legislature can work on because it's a shame that we have such big parts of Sumner County that don't have high-speed internet. Commissioner Taylor, you're in the queue.
Yes.
Are you going to point out that you have high-speed internet in Westmoreland, Mr. Taylor?
We have it and we don't have water on some roads. We got the high-speed internet, but we don't have water.
But no water.
But what I was going to say is if we can include a thank you note to our state legislator because the North Central Telephone Cooperative just received a grant to provide more in my area with high-speed internet over and around the Bracken Towne community.
Good.
So they received a grant. The local telephone provider, the way we got broadband before we got water was a $50 million grant that they received back when they put the people back to work, or whatever it was called, which helped our area a whole lot, not only for residents but for businesses to come in. So if we could just include that, thank you to the legislator.
Yeah, I think we can absolutely do that and I think that's a big deal for us. Mr. Graves.
I just want to comment. Tri-County also, they have put fiber optic in the Castay and Bethpage-Westmoreland area too, the ones that don't have the NCTC service. Also, just to comment about the water, the water's so bad that we don't have it on some roads in front of Bethpage store, there was a pothole and there was a duck sitting in it.
All right. I think we have about beaten this horse to death, so we're going to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We've also established tonight that everywhere in Sumner County, except Upper Station Camp, has high-speed internet.
Mr. Chairman, we don't have a number for it yet, but I believe that Mr. Hinton has a robocall resolution that he wants to present in the committee.
17.
It'll be number 1904-17.
I'll make that motion then.
A motion made by Commissioner Ring, seconded by Commissioner Tinsley.
Did I get the robocall for something here?
Let me give a little background and then I'll come to Mr. Hinton. Mr. Hinton approached me last month because I think everybody, no one, has a deep appreciation for robocalls. And the legislature is considering a bill about robocalls, so Mr. Hinton had asked that we pass a resolution. I think I may have communicated, but I wouldn't swear to it. So somehow, we dropped the ball of getting it to legislative. With the legislature being done in May, probably by the next time we meet, we wanted to get this before the floor. So I'm going to yield the floor to Mr. Hinton and let him explain his bill.
He's done his job, maybe.
Okay. All right. All right. No. He's good. He's good. All right. No one else is in the queue? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
That's it for legislative.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ring. We'll go to budget. Mr. Taylor, Chris Taylor.
1904-04, it's appropriating up to $112,450 from local capital projects restricted fund balance to the Hendersonville Library for geothermal repairs of their heat and air. I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Goode. Mr. Hinton.
Everybody needs to vote for this, regardless how you feel about some of the issues that surround this, because Hendersonville has a library that serves lots of folks down there and they don't care much about the little hangups that we have on this issue, that issue, who owns the library and who leases the library. They don't care. They don't worry about that and they don't need to worry about that. We need to spend whatever money it takes to keep the library functional. Now, I will make this comment, that we've talked about this before, that there's a little glitch in the deed, but we're going to, we'll address that somewhere down the road. Portland's library belongs to the city of Portland because it's set in a land grant and everybody knew that when that building was built. And I will tell you this, if this happened at Portland, the foundation or the community or somebody would have to raise this money because we don't even have the Portland on the county's contract for pest control. We got a contract for all the libraries for pest control that the county pays for except for Portland. So there needs to be some additional consideration. We need to be a little bigger than just being that petty. We've got five wonderful libraries. I spent 25 or 30 years banging on doors and begging money for a library. And Millersville, if you hadn't went and looked at theirs, you ought to do that now. You just ought to do that. You've got a library system in Sumner County that you can, when the folks come down to visit, you can take them, show them, because it's worth bragging about. And even the people that come and visit the library board meetings from the state will tell you that our library system in Sumner County is unmatched anywhere in the state of Tennessee. So libraries need to be held in the highest priority and then we'll argue behind the scenes if we need to. So I encourage everybody to vote for it.
Mr. Hinton, Ms. Denny just told me that John Bradley has the deed signed and is sending it to us.
Good.
So we may get one of those little quirky things out of the way.
Yes, I want to work off.
All right. Let's vote.
Okay, are we voting on four, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Yes, ma'am. Number four.
Okay, the vote's up and Mr. Chairman on number four. 23 votes. Anybody wishing to vote? Has it voted? 23 votes.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. All right, Mr. Taylor.
1904-05, appropriating up to $460,000 from local capital projects restricted fund balance, including a survey and appraisal for the purchase of three acres at $150,000 per acre behind the Sumner County Administrative Building. I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Goode. Mr. Mansfield, you're first up in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I think Mr. Graves' mantra is becoming potholes and Mr. Taylor's is becoming waterlines and sitting in between them. They influenced me, I think mine's becoming appraisals. So I do want to thank the Legislative Committee and the efforts that were made to set aside for appraisals and survey of land and contracts. So thank you guys for doing that. However, we got so close, based on what I would like to really see happen with this. I feel to be more prudent in the best interest of the hard-working taxpayers of our county to have a small amount of funds allocated first for an appraisal, a contract of sale, and a survey before the larger amount is given. Once the findings of all three are discussed and debated and brought back to us from a land, whether we want to move forward with it or not, we can proceed with allocating money for the actual sale, but I think it should be a two-step process. Kind of, I feel we're getting the cart before the horse on every single one of these and I would like us to do a process that is more expected and what I consider normal. I know it was said in the Legislative Committee that this is kind of, I think, how government does it, but that's the reason why people don't trust government, is because they do things the wrong way, at least in my opinion, in that of the citizens. So I actually did a survey, and not that a Facebook poll really has much merit or count, but I did it anyway and 99% or 242 out of 243 people agreed that we should not buy or trade property. I didn't have the chance to say, or appropriate money before we get an appraisal, without getting appraisal, contract of sale, or survey of land. So it's important that I think we do that. However, based on my understanding, based on what I've seen from citizens, we do this against their wishes. We appropriate their hard-earned tax dollars really before they know what they're getting. And I understand that the law director's been directed to get this, but we're appropriating the money upfront. And I don't really know of a single land deal that this county has done where it's refrained from spending money, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, once it's already been appropriated. So I think, I don't want to run into the federal version of we've got to pass what it is to find out what's in it. So in my opinion, and that of the citizens' opinion, doing business in this manner does not convey to citizens that work is being done in their best interest. Unfortunately, we are not going to have a record before we appropriate this large sum of money to say, hey, we can preview otherwise. So I'm not for doing this. Again, we came close. I think we came really close. I just think we need to do it the right way, a way that is, let's give the citizens a fair shake, because right now, I can't support this land deal because I don't support how we did it. However, if we go through the right process, then let's debate the merits of, do we need this land or not? Because that's a separate issue to me and that's one that I think citizens would have more of a voice in. But right now, I can't get to that point because I don't like the way this process has happened based on what the citizens have told me. Therefore, Mr. Chairman, I would like to move, to refer this back to general operations so that we can try to take the right step to get a survey of land, contract of sale, and an appraisal, the exact land we're getting, allocate money, it's 1,800 bucks or $2,000. getting, allocate money, it's eighteen hundred bucks or two thousand dollars, um, in order to do this, and then come back to the full commission in May, um, and with the findings, in order to say, here's what this actual land is, it's greater than, less than, it's actually worth this, it's not worth this, uh, so if we need to negotiate a better deal, we can, at least let the citizens know what's happening. And then after we get those results, the citizens give input to say, hey, we want you to proceed with this, we know the risk, or we know the reward, we're willing to, to stomach this or not. And so, um, so therefore, I move that this be referred back to general ops, in order to get an appraisal before we appropriate 450,000 dollars for a purchase. Let's do an appraisal amount first. That is definitely within our bounds and means to do that, and so that is my motion.
Okay. It's been a motion made to refer to general ops, seconded by Commissioner, motion made by Commissioner Mansfield, seconded by Commissioner Mo Taylor. Does anyone in the queue wish to speak to the amendment to refer? Okay, Mr. Becker?
Okay, so, just looking at this, this, uh, language here, can I get some clarification on, and this will affect my decision, uh, on, on the amendment, um, or on the motion. But what is the conditions here? So, i- if we go through the survey, go through the appraisal, and, and the appraisal comes in at less than the 150 per acre, what, what, what are the conditions here of, of moving forward this?
So basically, basically, there are stipulations that we put in here for the county law director to negotiate. If the survey comes back and it's less than the three acres, or it's less than 150,000 per acre, then she can't close the deal, because it's not in the terms of the agreement. So, basically, she's authorized up to that 450,000 dollar amount if it meets the obligations of the appraisal at 150,000 or greater per acre, and the surveyed land amount.
Does that answer that question, Mr. Becker?
Well, I, I want to clarify that. So I think it did. So let me, let me just rephrase what I think you, what I think I just heard. So, if, if we were to approve this tonight, and the survey says it's 2.99 acres, then deal's off?
Yep.
Okay. If it says it's three or greater, then deal's still on? Okay. And then also, if...
Yes, let me, I'm sorry. I nodded my head, but for the record, let me say yes.
Yes, okay. And then if it's 3.00 or greater acres, and the average of 150 per acre, or i- the average is at least 150 per acre, or the average of each is...
The three acres would have to appraise at 450,000 dollars or higher, total.
Okay. So if it's 3.00 or higher acres, and a minimum of 150,000, well, 450,000 in total, then that would meet the criteria. Otherwise, deal, like, the law director does not have the authority?
That's correct.
Okay. So that, that is, that tells me that there's really no use in sending this back to legislative.
Okay.
Uh, it, it goes back to really, do we think we want the land or not, which is what the other commissioner noted.
Let me, let me go to the law director real quickly. Yes, you just hit it. No, you're right, you're good. Would you, hang on one second. Yes.
Given the circumstances surrounding this purchase, my plan had always be, had always been, to get the survey done, to get the appraisal done, and also, your planning, um, director had volunteered to go out and walk it also, too, to see if there were any other issues that he had. We would take that information, do a purchase agreement, which is what we do, and then we would come back to y'all and make the purchase agreement, subject to this body authorizing it, because of the controversy involved. And we'd, and we'd also deal with whatever timeline the seller wanted us to go forward with also.
So, so just to clarify, though, even though that was her plan for the practice, the resolution that we're, that's on the table specifies appraisal, survey, all that, so that, to answer your first question, Mr. Becker.
Mm-hmm.
Does anyone else, I have, uh, hang on, Commissioner Mo Taylor in the queue, do you wish to speak to the amendment to refer, or to the main amendment?
Aye.
Or main motion, I'm sorry. Okay. Uh, Commissioner Baker Ring, you're next.
Uh, yes, just clarification. We, we, with the attorney, we can't go and survey and assess somebody else's property without some kind of a resolution from us, is that correct?
I'll have to get some sort, I'll have to get permission.
Right, but this, but, but basically, in order to do what we need to do before we buy the property, we have to pass this, a resolution.
I need money, yes.
Correct, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ring. Mr. Goode, do you want to speak on the res, on the, uh, motion to refer?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I, I would definitely be voting against, um, the referral, uh, and point out a couple of points, uh, and agree with the previous two commissioners. Um, number one, the county executive has pointed out to us that the seller has told us this is the price. Um, uh, we know from comps, which is the basic, uh, element of, of commercial and residential real estate prior to an actual appraisal, uh, from a licensed appraisal, that we're estimating to be getting this property at roughly half-price. We bought this building, and the law director can, correct me if I'm wrong, if I remember the details of this building, and we paid about 3.9 million dollars for this, twenty, twenty-five years ago?
No recollection, almost thirty.
Almost thirty years ago. Um, and boy, if we would have had a commission before us that would have thought ahead in time and been buying land when it was far, far, far less, how much easier it would have been for us today. I paraphrased a friend of mine from Portland that said, one, and I'm paraphrasing, don't let me put words in your mouth, about a month ago, they're not making any more land. Uh, and I said in legislative, how great would it have been if two, three, four, five commissioners from now, uh, that paid 200,000 dollars for the courthouse would have bought more land sometime over the last fifty, sixty years. Uh, we had some commissioners tonight that wanted to affect every taxpayer, um, with the assessors difference of chain, making a massive change within a seventy-two-hour change, wanted to then go ahead and vote and do that without the due diligence. Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, uh, this is as close to a no-brainer as it's come, and I, I will re-echo what my two commissioners said before me. We will not do this unless it appraises with the law directors, uh, which is the way it is working. If, if you were buying a house, you, you, this is the process you would essentially go through. So it's not government. And I keep hearing all these people say, all the citizens are telling them how negative it is, and how bad it is. Well, I hear the exact opposite. I'm involved in numerous Rotary Clubs, involved in so forth, so I, I don't know who all these citizens are, but I hear the exact opposite. There's twenty-four of us, I think one or two have said they hear negative. So I think it's kind of positive in the grand scheme of things. Um, so, uh, I say we defer, uh, I'm sorry, vote against the referral, and we need to purchase this property, and again, with the assurance that the law director, if it doesn't meet every standard we have, uh, we will not purchase this property. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Goode. Commissioner Chris Taylor, do you want to speak on the motion, or the main, the, the motion to refer, or the main?
I'll just hold my tongue, sir.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Tinsley.
On the main thing.
Okay. Commissioner Graves.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, it's on the amendment.
Okay, you're on.
But anyway, I, I, I just want to make sure it's three usable acres, if that makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
It could be, uh, two acres of usable land, uh, and that acre is not usable, we, so we wouldn't be getting but two acres. I just, it's, Madam Attorney, is that, now, has he got more land he would sell us if he didn't have but two, do you know?
Let, let's stick to the three tonight, Mr. Graves.
All right. We just need three.
Well, let's debate the three. Mr. Hyde.
Mr. Chairman, I, I can vote...
Hang on one second, Mr. Hyde, I'm sorry, we gotta get you on the, there we go.
I can vote for this tonight, based on the fact that we're backing into it, I think, incorrectly. And I did want to make one comment. If it's true that we have to pass a resolution like this, before we can survey or do anything else on the property, I bought, I, I just confess, I bought many pieces of school property illegally.
No, sir, and, and you're correct. I'm just saying, if you want me to do it, I don't have any money to pay for it.
It's not required that we do this.
No, sir, no, sir. It is not a requirement that we do that. No, sir. I'm just saying, if you want me to, I need cash.
I think you're in the clear, Mr. Hyde. I think that sometimes they want money at the, at the tail end, the backside of the process.
And, and Mr. Hyde, Mr. Hyde understands that when we're trying to buy land, the, the seller may tell us, this is what I want, and we're stuck with it.
I understand, and, and...
Hang, hang on one, hang on one second, Mr. Hyde.
I can support this, although it would have been much better, like Commissioner Mansfield said, if we'd done it straightforwardly, instead of backing into it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hyde. Uh, Mr. Mr. Tinsley, are you on the, okay, go ahead, Mr. Tinsley.
Got their question. Um, do we know what it's going to cost to appraise this piece of property? Do we know how much money Leon needs this kind of...
What we did, Mr. Tinsley, in, in, uh, legislative, the original resolution was 450,000 dollars for the three acres, 150,000 per. We added 10,002 to cover the cost of the survey and the appraisal. Uh, you know, Mr. Goode does this for a living, we have several, Mr. Holt's done it for a while, we feel that the 10,000 provides adequate coverage, probably won't be anywhere...
But, but to, um, to get the appraisal done, we have to pass, like, the package deal?
Yes. Yeah. Well, I mean, we have to at least cover the cost. We, we have...
Can we cut it in half and say, like, this is the appraisal over here, and this is for the land over here? Is that something we can do?
Well, we can't on the motion to recall, or to refer. Like, if you wanted to offer that as an amendment, if it doesn't refer, right now, we got to vote on the refer. If it comes back, then you could make that amendment. Okay. Uh, Mr. Hinton?
We're, we're, we're gonna massage this to death, and then we're gonna go to that guy and say, this didn't, you, you like a tenth having three acres, and he's gonna say, I don't care. Go talk to him. And you're asking too much for your property, and he's gonna say, I don't care. You want it or not? So, that's where we're gonna, you wait and see, that's where we're gonna wind up, because I've done, heard those comments, when we started this dialogue, the guy says, I want this amount of money. He don't care if you like twenty yards having three acres, and he don't care what your appraiser says about it. You go either pay him that money, if we want it, we'll pay him that money, buy the property. If we don't want it, we won't pay the money, and we don't get the property. Now that's what it's gonna come down to. Now you can go, you can, we can go round and round three more times for him, too, but that's where we're gonna land, because he owns it, and he won't sell it for no less. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hinton. Mr. Taylor, are you waiting on the main still?
Still waiting.
Okay, all right. Mr. Holt, are you on the main, or are you on the recall? Okay. All right. No one else in the queue. Let me explain. Motion to refer to general ops is on the floor. If you vote yes, if you hit that green button, you're voting to refer this to general ops. If you hit your red button, you're voting no, and we'll go back to the main amendment to discuss, uh, purchasing the property. Let's, let's vote.
The vote's open, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Is anybody voting wishing to change their vote? There's twenty no's, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, motion to refer fails. All right, we're back on the main motion. Uh, Commissioner Mo Taylor, you're up.
Yeah, I actually want to start out by, by complimenting the, the, uh, committee process and the commission. This one traveled through the proper channels. It's not like the one out on Airport Road that didn't. Um, so, but, I do, um, seek a little caution to the wind here. You know, my grandpa told me when I was a young man, that, son, if you ever get the opportunity to buy property that joins you, buy it. But he also taught me that you got to make sure it's a good deal, and you got to have your ducks in a row before you know if it's a good deal or not. So, I, I never spoke that I was opposed to buying the property. Um, what I have spoke to i- in the committee was the process, once again, that's already been beat to death, so I'm not going to repeat it. But in the track, real estate transactions that I've had, that it's, you know, it's typically in the closing costs project of how, how stuff are, you know, split out amongst one another. I understand if, if we're a government entity and we're the buyer, that we just have to do what the seller says. We don't have to do what the seller says. We don't have to, to buy the property. Um, I, I, I want to be, I'm, I'm looking forward to an appraisal, because I want to see what, what the property's actually valued at. If you want to do a similar search, you can go right across the street out here in front of the building. Whether you know it or not, you're getting a new state, um, probation and parole board office, right across the street. That would be a, a similar kind of piece of property, see what that property brought. Um, it bought by government, just a higher level of government, I'm guessing. Um, so, you know, like, I, I spoke to in committee, the, the value of the property and what we're getting, there, I, I dealt with railroads for years, and, and they have a, they usually have a pretty large easement. So this track back here is, is a long track, a long, narrow track. Um, and, you know, I, I've spoke to, like, to see what I'm, I'm buying before I allocate money to buy it, but that, that wasn't the process that we did. So that, um, is gonna have to encourage me to vote no, um, because I kind of feel like that even though we are government, we may do things differently, sometimes we put the cart before the horse. It's a whole lot easier to pull the wagon up here than it is to push it. So, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. As we've tried to do, I'm trying to get people that have not spoken yet in the queue, before we get people that have spoken already, so I'm gonna go to the county executive, and then to Mr. Sullivan.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening. You know, I've been involved in, uh, quite a few property purchases over the years, my thirty years. Um, Mr. Hyde and I worked together. Uh, we actually purchased the campus, Station Camp High School, and, and I had tried that before with, uh, I guess my disappointment with a previous school superintendent, uh, Mr. Hubbard, and, uh, we bought the, uh, Station Camp property, which was 125 acres, Mr. Hyde, for a million dollars. That was 8,000 dollars an acre. Uh, we could have bought it two years earlier, if Mr. Hubbard would have shown interest for 6,000 dollars an acre. But I think that was a good value. We didn't appraise it. We bought it from the Franklands, and I can say that it's one of our nicest campuses today, and I pride myself on, uh, trying to make good real estate purchases, not only for my personal, uh, well-being, but for the county. Uh, you know, I hear a lot about constituents, what constituents say, and I've never really been criticized for that. Then, if you fast-forward, uh, working with Dr. Phillips, he determined the location, and I negotiated the price, we purchased 265 acres on Upper Station Camp Creek Road. It backs up the Hunter's Lane. We spent 3.5 million dollars for that. Very nice track. I hope you've had an opportunity to go out there and look at it. It's gonna be this beautiful school campus. And we're gonna have an opportunity to put a park out there. We paid 13,207.54 cents an acre. Uh, in the end, through a generous donation from Mr. Brown, he donated back 8 million dollars. So, I don't know, I'm, kind of like Commissioner Hinton, I'm, may not be the smartest guy in the world, but it sounds like a pretty good deal to me. We got, uh, 265 acres and four-and-a-half million dollars to boot. That's a decent deal. I'll take that one. Um, if we look at comps around this particular piece of property, and this will never benefit some of us, because we won't be around when we need to build a building, we look across the street to Tula Poplar, and I think, uh, Commissioner Mo Taylor mentioned this, he said, well, what you need is comps, and that's, that's the way you do it, during the real estate business. You make sure that you're not overpaying for something. Uh, the Hilton Gardens paid 500,000 dollars for 1.6 acres. It's on the same road, Tula Poplar, it's across Belvedere here. That is a little bit more than 300,000 dollars an acre. There is a railroad track on this side, there's a railroad track over there, but it's on the... the opposite side of the road. This building's been here since nineteen-ninety, I was, I guess, the only elected official here that was commissioner that was left, that moved into this building. We met three or four times at the courthouse, and then we moved over here, and, you know, this building, everybody made fun of it, and we didn't spend four million dollars on it, it's just called the Taj Mahal, it's too fancy. We moved over here, this building, it's finished on the first floor, Carolyn, you were here, wasn't finished on the second floor completely, third floor was vacant. Today, there's no room left. So, one day, we're going to have to grow. The land behind us joins a railroad track, but this is five acres that joins a railroad I don't have a problem, as long as I have the available money to do a survey and appraisal, but I would be dumbfounded if this property that's owned General Commercial Services is not worth a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars an acre. And I can tell you, the gentleman that owns the property has the ability to sell all of it, which is seventeen-point-four acres, not including one-point-six acres at the very end, that is for only retention, which you're going to need. So, it actually makes the property even more valuable, because everything you sell can be utilized, unlike the very front of this, it has to be retention, you have to have water retention, no matter what you buy, and there's an easement to that. So, I think you've covered every base. You've got a good purchase price, in my humble opinion, you have included in that a survey and an appraisal. Once those things are done, you'll close on a piece of property that I can assure you, in the future, will be invaluable to whoever is elected to represent the great people of Sumner County, because you're going to need more space, and the most cost-effective way to add more space is to have a campus. And I want to applaud Ms. Schell, Commissioner Schell, for her work on the courthouse, because what she's doing is, she's taking a lot of campuses, three, and she's consolidating them into one campus, that's much more cost-effective. Mr. Hyde did a great job as our director of schools, but he understands the cost of running facilities all over the county. It's very expensive, a lot more maintenance. So, that's basically what you're talking about, and I think, with taxpayers I talk to, it's going to save our taxpayers, our citizens, and make it more convenient for our citizens to come to one location to get the services that they need, they're required to have, and I think they want. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Holt, we're going to go to Mr. Sullivan.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I may, I, I would like to, before I call the question, just say that I think that the growth of our campus is, is needed, the growth of the county is inevitable, and this gentleman has offered this land, and like Mr. Hinton, Commissioner Hinton said, he's going to get what he wants for it, and I guarantee you, within the next ten years, that hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar-per-acre land in that location is going to be about three-hundred-thousand dollars, so I call for the question.
Okay. Mr. Sullivan called for the question, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schell. We're going to vote on call the question.
Ready, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
It's on the board, Mr. Chairman. How many votes?
Two.
There's sixteen votes, passes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, call the question passes, we'll vote now on the main, okay?
Okay, you read, Mr. Chairman?
Let's vote.
It's on the board.
You're voting on the approval of the property, to purchase the property?
Twenty votes, Mr. Chairman, passes.
Okay. Motion passes.
Motion passed.
Hang on, hang on, we got another, got another item.
Sorry.
Nineteen-oh-four dash thirteen. Go ahead, can you get Commissioner Taylor?
Oh, sorry.
Hang on one second, Mr. Taylor.
I was waiting for the red, all right. Nineteen-oh-four dash one-three, which is approving three-hundred-thousand transfer of funds from the general purpose school funds to the federal projects funds. The reason they're doing this is, for you to main, to be able to buy, to be able to use federal grants, we have to pay for it first, then they reimburse us. Well, they don't reimburse us in a timely fashion, by any stretch of the imagination, so it can be several months longer before we get that money back. We can't keep that fund in a negative balance at any point, so to ensure that we can continue to use federal grants, we have to ensure that we have money in there kind of to start it. He wants to move three-hundred-thousand from his general fund into there, it's not going to impact the budget, or impact the maintenance and means in any fashion, it's simply an accounting setup, so that we can continue to use the federal funds. Regrettably for poorer counties that don't have the money, they don't get to use the funds as much as we could. Nice move.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Goode. I see no one in the queue, let's vote.
It's on the board, Mr. Chairman.
Motion passes unanimously, Mr. Goode?
Mr. Goode.
Oh.
For the record, there were four signs.
Oh.